Hey. What is culture?
I'm ready.
Are we going to start this meeting with a Christmas carol?
(Music) Carols angels sing. Okay, we're ready. Okay, I will go ahead and start our city council work session. Welcome. We typically don't see people at our work sessions, so this is pretty cool. Thank you for joining us. For the record, it is Tuesday, December 17th. It's 4:30. We'll start with roll call attendance. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Myla.
Here.
Councilmember Burton.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Ho, ho, ho.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here.
Absent is Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. Item two is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Borton.
We are adding to the consent agenda. Oh, sorry. Yes, sir. Merry Christmas, Dean. Adding to the consent agenda an item 3S, Health Savings Account Administrative Services Agreement. And item 6A and 6B are to be vacated from the agenda. They're going to be scheduled for January 7th next year.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I guess A will be rescheduled. If we have time to hear B, we will hear it tonight.
Okay. So 6B stays on as published. With those crystal clear amendments, move we adopt the agenda?
I have a motion and second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Madam Mayor, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Before there's a vote, can... Item 3S, just curious, the reason why it's being added to the consent kind of late in the game?
Mr. Mayor?
Something was... It was on my radar.
Yes, thank you, Madam Members of Council. Councilmember Cavanagh. So this is in addition... An agreement to our benefits package that the health savings accounts are no longer being done by KeyBank but are being managed through Discovery Benefits. We already have an existing relationship with Discovery Benefits, so this is an add-on to their service that they're already providing because KeyBank no longer will provide... We no longer want KeyBank to provide that service we wanted to do. Move to Discovery for some simplicity and some consolidation with the other benefit. So we had some language issues. We've had discussions. We finally got their approval and it came in on Friday, so.
And this... We don't have another meeting for three weeks.
Correct. We won't have another meeting until after the year starts and we need to have it in place before the year.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item three is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move we approve the consent agenda as it's been amended for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Myla.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Are we doing "ho, ho, ho"?
Uh-huh.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, thank you. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move into item 5A, which is a resolution.
Okay, that's right.
Crystal gave her presentation last week and unless you have anything further on that, I'm just looking for some action.
Approval. Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Burton.
I move that we approve Resolution 19-2180.
Second.
A motion and second to approve item 5A. If there's no discussion, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Myla.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 5B is a public hearing continued from November 19th. And we have this both on this agenda and also the 6 o'clock. I'll turn this over to Caleb and Brian. This was continued for specific topics and so any comments will be limited to those during this public hearing process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel for having us once again. Mayor, I'll touch a little bit more on what you just finished that opening with here and the scope of the project tonight, but this is the entire comprehensive plan for the City of Meridian that's before you this evening. A little bit of a refresher, we did have the original public hearing on this topic on November 19th. It was then continued a week to the 16th of November. We then had a discussion. That one wasn't open for public testimony on the 26th. We had some new information that staff had drafted up that we discussed on the 26th, made that available for public comment, and really that's what is before you, again in the context of the broader, bigger, entire comprehensive plan. But those topics include what you see on the screen there. It is interesting to note that all of the changes proposed are in Chapter 3, which is our evolving community chapter in the plan. We did, and it's not typical, but Council President Borton recommended we both hear this at 4:30 and then at 6:00. I'm sure you're all aware of that at this point for the reasons that are on the screen here. Would just note, we've seen a whole lot of testimony come in. I would encourage you to read that. Had some just as early as... As late as the last 20 minutes still rolling in, so I haven't had a chance to even digest all of them, but am aware of those letters coming in. But I would encourage you to check that, and I know the clerk's done a great job of keeping those letters and that form of public testimony updated on laser fish. One of the things that came up, and I just wanted to address one of those things, there's many and I'm not here to talk about all of them, but just is the... This is, in that process, some of the change you're going to see, particularly on this slide, is new. And this is the first opportunity that the public has a chance to really share their thoughts on this information. This was not vetted through the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. It was not reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was something that staff drafted as we thought it was a response to what we were hearing from the public and the council at the time, again at those first two meetings. We aren't necessarily here to advocate for it. We think it's good, but honestly, it's not, again, something that we think is even imperative that be included in the plan. We did it, again, more as a response to what the direction we thought we were getting and the comments we were hearing. But it does not have to be remanded back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You are the decision-making board. What we've done meets all statutory requirements of the state of Idaho as well as our own codes and policies. So you do have the ability to approve tonight changes, tweaks to the plan as drafted. And again, there is a public hearing to talk about these things that are new to the public. I just want, as a reminder, as I kind of go a little bit more into depth on some of these specific changes, the comp plan is policies. It's not code. They are not standards. It's a guiding document of development. It directs growth and development, but it doesn't dictate those standards. And it's not a one-size-fits-all. These policies and the map all work together and sometimes actually conflict with each other to some degree. We take them all into account when considering the appropriateness of a project. So this doesn't protect anyone necessarily in and of itself. There are, again, a lot of things that factor in the appropriateness of a policy here. So just for example, we'll get in here a little bit to the policy, right? The new policy 30701F. Staff would continue to look at the appropriateness of applying this policy. For example, if an adjacent property that's five acres, still rural, still with a home on it in the county, and a project is coming in, does that property owner want one-acre properties next to them or are they the next in line to develop? Are they saying, "Don't put one acres next to me. I want to do density on my property as well"? So that's something we would take into account. What does that property owner want to see adjacent to them? They may not want to have to transition from one-acre lots, right? Because we'd probably require that to be transitioned back. What is the comp plan designation of that property? Is it planned for medium density or medium-high density? Probably don't want, you know, one-acre lots aren't appropriate there, again. So looking at a whole lot of things at the same time to say, "Well, is this appropriate or not"? This isn't... Again, it's a guide. It's a policy. It can be used and it should be used when appropriate, but it's not every time there's a five-acre lot, thou shalt put in one-acre lots adjacent to it. So can be appropriate. A lot of times, it may not be appropriate. So just wanted to put that out there that, again, this isn't code and it doesn't have to be the case every time, especially when you have consenting property owners that neither one of them want to build one-acre lots there. And the city, quite frankly, maybe doesn't envision one-acre lots there in the first place because it's got a medium-density designation. But again, this was drafted in response to some of the testimony we were hearing. So I think maybe just before leaving this one, in summary, there are some 500 policies that, again, all work together. This one, we think strengthens that appropriateness and transition that we're looking for from property to property. We still think the plan's solid even if you don't have the draft policy in there. Again, we're not saying take it out necessarily, but just we think there's enough already with the existing policies that have been vetted through the public and the steering committee that provide a lot of guidance on appropriateness of transitions to estate-type So those are really the text changes. The future land use map changes were on that first slide that I showed enumerated there. I think there were six of them, five, six of them. We missed one still even in that, even only having a handful of them. So on the map that went out to you all in the packet and that we put on the website, the property where the inset is shown blown up there, we colored that one red, which is commercial, and the request was to mixed-use commercial. So, excuse me, mixed-use regional. I'm still messing it up. Mixed-use regional, and we accidentally had colored it red. It's the right property, just had the wrong shade toning of the red there, so wanted to just put that on the record that this property that was requested there... We had it written correctly in the text summary. We just picked the wrong shading when we changed it. So again, apologies for any confusion there. The other changes, we can zoom into them if you'd like, but again, they're here on that last bullet. In the Magic Bridge area, so that's Locust Grove, I-84 Eagle area, there's some commercial along the frontage of Locust Grove, transitioning to mixed-use neighborhood, and then kind of medium-density residential along Woodbridge, adjacent to Woodbridge. Delgado, Black Cat Railroad Corridor, really scaled that back to the only industrial now is on the west side of the Purdham Drain and on the south side of the Purdham Drain next to railroad tracks. I think it's roughly 37 or so acres there. The rest of that remains as is Franklin Road west of Cloverdale. This is the ACHD, and you had a couple of other property owners that wanted to remove their mixed-use regional designation and go to industrial. The Gem Tone was a mixed-use non-residential request. Northeast corner of Locust Grove and McMillan, that request was to commercial, commercial there, and northwest corner of Eustick and McDermott I just talked about. So those are also shown on the map that's been out there, this version of the map that you see there. I do have a PDF if you want to zoom in and look at those any more closely. So with that, those were the items that you directed that are the topic of discussion tonight, but again, there is a larger context, the plan here at play. We have known of some additional changes that are out there, but we've been telling folks this is the limited scope of the potential changes and really the questions that are before the council tonight are larger than this, but largely the public testimony we anticipate are... Should revolve around these topics that are on the screen now. So with that, a quick summary of what's happened the last couple of times and where we stand, and with that, we'll stand for any questions.
Hey, Counsel, any questions? Mr. Cavanagh.
Madam Mayor, thanks. Caleb, can you summarize some of these additional changes that you said that... Sorry, that you're aware of? That's... Sorry, that just... I guess I'm not aware of what those are, and so I'm curious.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, the additional changes are requests from the public for map changes to you. So they're on the searchable documents, but it's not something we've prepared responses to because they're extreme last minute.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Thanks. I misunderstood. I thought you were referring to like from a group or from something, not necessarily what has been reflected in the public comment, so I appreciate that. Madam Mayor, I do have an additional question for Caleb and/or Brian. Because this didn't go back to the Steering Committee or P&amp;Z, can you kind of... This 3.7.1F, I appreciate the intention behind it, but I am concerned about, are we going to create some unintended consequences of future infill issues in the future? And is that something staff discussed? And I'm just... You guys are the experts, and so I'm really looking to some guidance on that particular piece. It's one that I think there's really great intentions behind it, but I fear we may create a lot of future problems for ourselves.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, five-acre parcels with estate-type dwelling units are very, very rare. We've intentionally not defined that because there is some need for some flexibility around that, but I don't foresee a lot of issues for staff because of the reasons Caleb mentioned earlier, such as what is the underlying land use for that? If it's high, it doesn't really matter because we're planning for that there. Those areas can come into conflict, but it gives us more flexibility to consider those things when and if they arise. So in short, I don't actually see a lot of five-acre estate properties elsewhere in the county. They're typically larger or smaller, and we didn't target those, but again, as Caleb said, this was after all the other public involvement. This was after the steering committee. The planning zoning did sort of suggest something like this. They asked us to specifically... And asked you to specifically look at transitions, but they didn't see this exact verbiage. But certainly, anything could have unintended consequences.
Okay, any other questions for staff at this time? Madam Clerk, any sign-ups?
Madam Mayor, there are 14 people that signed in, three of which wish to speak, the first of which is Susan Carnes.
Okay. And that might be for later this evening.
Absolutely. The second person is Mike Wardle.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Wardle, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is Mike? Yes, sir.
in Meridian. Before I begin, I just want to, since this is likely the last time that I will speak to some of you in this venue, thank you for your service. I guess Myla... Genesis has already moved on. But thank you. We appreciate many years of experience and opportunity to talk about the growth and development of the community. What I've provided to you, and I'm going to just use one real-life example to illustrate the concern that we have for what we are referring to, is the future land use action item 3.07.01F related to this specific question of transitioning to five-acre parcels. When we brought Pollard Subdivision before you, the council, I believe, addressed this and approved it on May 21st of this year, we abutted an interesting, what we called the old-school neighborhood. One parcel, a one-acre parcel, then ranging from five up to 15 acres. And the project that we... I don't appear to have the ability to forward this.
It's...
It's...
No, because it's a PDF. It's not a PowerPoint.
Okay. The subdivision that we brought forward, again, abutting the five, 10, 11, 15-acre parcels, had some quite small lots. But as we worked with the neighborhood, we came up with a concept that was mutually agreeable, solved their primary concerns, and it was through the form of a berm, fencing, and a buffer, a landscape buffer that would be on both sides of that berm with the fence at the top. And so the third slide, Caleb just shows that area that was depicted. It was part of our landscape plan that was approved as part of the project. When we had the hearings, both at planning and zoning and at city council, that neighborhood was here in support. Some of them didn't speak, but they were here, most of them. But those that spoke all spoke in favor, noting that we had worked through their concerns and had addressed the issues that would be a potential challenge to them down the line. Mr. Turnbull's letter that's attached, that was filed yesterday morning, basically notes that the language that's been proposed, even though staff has indicated that it's a guide and not a zoning-specific, but we believe that the language actually proposed is zoning-specific. It does not provide just a general guide and a concern on how to deal with transitions. It's very specific. It was noted, I think, in the subsequent discussion here just a few minutes ago, this reciprocal transition, and we view that as potentially a transition penalty. Because if you have the requirement, absolute requirement for one-acre lots on one side, when the five-acre redevelops as they will over time, then what does that property owner lose in potential development opportunity by having to transition to a one-acre lot on the other side? So there's a reciprocal unintended consequence, we believe.
Mr. Wardle, your time is up.
Happy to conclude. That's all I wanted to do, is just bring this very specific solution that shows how a development can work with the neighbors to address the question without being required to a specific mandate. Be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Merry Christmas.
Madam Mayor, Deborah Nelson.
Good evening, if you'll... Or afternoon, or whatever it is. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Aye, Mayor, and Councilmembers. Deborah Nelson at 601 West Bannock. A point of order first. Would you prefer testimony on the comprehensive plan to come before you now or at the public hearing tonight? Do you have a preference?
No.
Okay. We'll just plow forward. So I'm here tonight on behalf of 10 Mile South LLC and its members, which include Mark Bottles, who's also here with me tonight. And we're here to ask you to adopt the plan that was presented to you by the steering committee without this new policy of 30701F that Caleb introduced. The council's received a lot of opposition in writing to this. We've read that record. We'll try not to repeat those points. We hope you've taken them into account. Instead, what I want to try to do is focus in on one example that is a property that's owned by 10 Mile South LLC to show how it impacts them and how this policy has some pretty broad-ranging effects with its prescriptive language. 10 Mile South owns approximately 70 acres directly south of the I-84 interchange at the little blue box that's highlighted down here, and it's right at the corner of a principal arterial and a minor arterial. The designation under your future land use map for this property is mixed-use neighborhood, which anticipates mixed use in densities that range from 6 to 12. Here you can see the property very specifically. This is our property in purple. Adjacent to us are the Stetson and Rockridge Estates, rural estate properties that have been vocal about transition. These are all... The Stetson and Rockridge are all about 5 to 10 acres. And looking at just this one section that's highlighted in red here, you can see the impact of this policy, how actually every single property within this one section would be impacted. The large developable properties, including ours and those to the south, and these that are over here, this is a large property here, this is 112 acres here, these are all connected directly adjacent to rural estate properties of approximately 5 to 10 acres. Some of them are impacted on multiple sides. Even the rural estate lots themselves are adjacent to other rural estate lots impacting redevelopment. This makes the planned densities in your future land use map impractical to obtain. You can't get 6 to 12 when you've got rural transition lots of one acres. Over here, you've got your plan for medium density. You can't obtain 3 to 8 when you've got multiple sides of one-acre transition. This is not just limited to this one section. Using the assessors' records, we looked at rural estates where there's a residential home now and looked at all of the properties that are adjacent to those, and those are all highlighted in red. So just looking at the areas in South Meridian, you can see the broad-ranging impact here. This policy is too prescriptive in its language, and it doesn't allow the flexibility that staff is saying that they would apply in interpretation to take into account things like the setbacks of homes. Adjacent to our property here, you can see that every home is over 300 feet from the property line. We ask you instead to look to other policy language that you have. 3.0502F and 3.0701A already provide you transitional density language that we'd ask you to use instead. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
It sounds in super-summar-y fashion that one of the principles that you're trying to capture isn't necessarily disagreeing that in some circumstances, the one-acre lot transition is the tool to solve appropriate transition, but it shouldn't be the exclusive one, and perhaps the development community should be afforded the flexibility that maybe the one-acre lot does solve the problem appropriately in one circumstance, but in another circumstance, like Mr. Wardle mentioned, there might be a different solution which accomplishes the same goal. Is that a fair summary? And the concern that the proposed new language sort of hamstrings the flexibility and in a sense jeopardizes the very goal we're trying to promote?
Madam Mayor, Council President Borton, I could not have said it better. That is exactly the concern. And while I appreciate very much what Caleb said about how they would interpret it to allow that flexibility, the language itself doesn't afford that interpretation flexibility. And we don't want you as elected officials to be hamstrung, nor do we want the development community or the adjacent affected property owners to assume these prescriptive terms apply when they should be instead afforded flexibility.
Madam Mayor, and that's how I took a lot of the comment we've received on that, was that it wasn't necessarily a position that the one-acre lots are never the solution necessarily as an appropriate transition, but not the only solution on a case-by-case basis, is when the staff and P&amp;Z and council can determine whether or not that's appropriate.
Madam Mayor, if I could comment on that. Council President Borton, that's exactly what is in the language that you have in those two policy provisions. It even uses the term transitional densities. And so it is contemplating exactly that, also considering buffering and other appropriate things that should come into account. So I would say you already have that language that was considered by the steering committee, by the P&amp;Z before you. You don't... You have that opportunity now to require that one-acre lots or any other size of lots might be the result on a case-by-case application.
And certainly, I think because we have the public comment both at the work session and the regular meeting, staff could look in the interim to see if there is broader language that might better fit and complement what's already articulated.
Madam Mayor. Madam Members of the council, I think if the... I guess the discussion point now is, is that 3.0701F even necessary? I think what Ms. Nelson is saying is you have other language that already captures the same essence. So yes, if the direction to...
So yes, if the direction to planning is either come up with more language or accept that proposition that it's not needed, that's, I think, the direction between now and six o'clock, or after the discussion at six, I think that's what we're looking for. Maybe to add one more fine point on it, one of the things that planning has talked about a great deal is there are implementation measures that come next. And of that is further discussion with the public, with the development community, with the elected officials on what do these policies mean, and how do we apply them, and what's the rules that we will put in code to make them have life? And by putting that restrictive language in this particular policy, there is no debate about it. Because there is no other, in my opinion, there's no other way to read that language other than to say you have to put one acre lots next to five acre lots. And there isn't any other way to create an ordinance around that. So that's what I think the concern is, is that discussion on standards and code that would then come to put some depth to your comp plan is lost because you've already created this very specific language that you can't do it any other way. And I think as Council President Borton said, that wasn't the intention we were talking about, is to create one tool. It was to not exclude one tool, but to include all tools. So I guess Ms. Nelson is saying you don't need that. You already have that, and you can still have the debate on what does it mean, and how do you apply it, and what code is appropriate.
And would that be a later follow-up step in developing policies or maybe even districts? I go back to an earlier discussion in how do you protect those areas that you want estate lots? And you want to protect that investment. It reminds me of a conversation I had years ago with Dennis Baker in saying, why don't you do a development like you have in Eagle? He said, I want to make sure that, long-term, that investment is protected. And I think that's what a lot of the county residents have been saying, is we want to make sure our investment is protected as well. And how can you best do that? It's probably not in the flume in a broad sense, but maybe more in following up with the future councils to talk about the districts and where those might make more sense, instead of more broad brush.
Madam Members, Council, you're exactly correct. And it takes that cooperativeness of a number of property owners, not just one section of a square mile, but more than that. And getting that cooperation on what would make sense long-term and master planning amongst various property owners. So you're right. I mean, that opportunity certainly isn't gone. I mean, that opportunity is still there. I think what the concern you're hearing from Ms. Nelson is that we're creating this one particular policy, we're actually foreclosing a lot of that because we're just saying we're not going to do that now. Everything has to be one way. And so I think you're exactly right. Certainly, that opportunity is still there.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mylum.
Not a question for you, Deb. Immediately, keep standing there. More of a comment to the discussion, though, is I think an important, an important part of this is direction to staff. And so I won't be around, but I think that having those further discussions and really making sure there is good direction for staff, you know, as far as what those areas are, and what is needed, and where is needed. And I agree, you know, you don't want to lock the door when there might be better options. But I know that that's been an issue for them with other things, and if they are working with a developer and they're like, well, it meets the minimum criteria of our comp plan and our UC, and, you know, so we have to recommend approval, even if that's not where they really feel that the direction should be. So I think it's just really important to have that communication before they spend a lot of time, and the developers spend a lot of time working on projects that ultimately isn't something that we want. I hope that was clear. Started out good in my head. But yeah, staff needs, the plant, they need direction from you guys. If we're not going to have that language in there, that discussion still needs to be had to protect those properties.
Madam Mayor, may I comment on that? Councilmember Mylum, I think that is beneficial for everyone to have that clear opportunity for communication with staff up front. And I think that the development community and landowners get that right now from staff when they look to your comprehensive plan for guidance. And I know one of the first places your staff looks is to your future land use map, to see what kind of densities are planned there. And that is very telling, and it's based on your roadway network and your infrastructure capabilities and everything else that should be considered, which are some of the, I'm afraid, unintended consequences of things that get precluded when you only look at one factor. So all of those things go into that staff recommendation of what they should expect. And we want to make sure all of those remain on the table for that discussion, and the city isn't precluded from looking to all those other important factors as well, as they consider the important private property rights of everyone involved. That is one of many factors that goes in, I think, to these decisions, and ultimately up to this council, who is going to make a decision on annexation, on rezone. So I appreciate those comments, and I think those opportunities exist now. I can sit down if you're ready for me to go, but I'm happy to answer questions, too.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, we had one additional sign up, Jane Byham representing an HOA.
Okay. Is Jane here? Probably signed up for later this evening, and we'll go ahead and call her name at that point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so this will continue discussion at our 6 o'clock regular scheduled agenda. Is there any other comments at this point? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move to six, not A, but B, and under our Public Works. And we will have a cutoff at 5:30. I know that Community Development said that they can do their key performance indicators at the 6 o'clock if need be. Okay. Thank you for being here. Dell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. And in conclusion?
Oh, that's awesome.
Thank you very much. Let this load. I do have a couple slides.
If your toilet flushes, that's an indicator that things are good.
No, really. In conclusion?
And if we don't get to it all, we can certainly hear the rest of it on the seventh under Old Business.
I think we got it. Awesome. Thank you. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the Public Works KPIs and kind of the process that we've been going through the last year or better. And actually, we started from a level of service perspective when we started kind of re-engaged on the overall topic. Can that be advanced? I'm hitting the arrow, and it's, there we go. So we looked at the kind of primary pillars of level of service for Public Works, and this is how those break down. So as you can imagine, regulatory compliance is a key issue. That's a non-discretionary kind of mandated requirement for reliability and quality, and obviously that really evolves around compliance. You're either, you either do or you don't. Customer service is really getting that feedback from our citizens in regards to their perception and perspective of the service that we provide. Reliability, really understanding the system risk, and providing continuous uninterrupted services is certainly our goal and our target. And quality in this context is largely those items that we manage from an internal operational and maintenance proactive practice standpoint. So under those pillars, then we created a number of key performance indicators for consideration. And you can see how those line up under those respective pillars. The items that are in white have been measured for quite some time. We've got good history and good detail. Those that are in red are items that we're pursuing as a department. We have varying levels of development on those. But you can kind of see the types of items that we're measuring and are recommending that could be candidates for council and forward-facing kinds of metrics for the community to be aware of. If we look a little bit closer on those that we highlighted in white, you'll see that the regulatory compliance item is really, it's an in-or-out kind of thing. And you'll see that we have four primary regulatory areas that we must comply with in our day-to-day operations. Of course, IPDS is the wastewater permit that we're operating against, reuse water permit, air permit, and then, of course, the water regulations as regulated by the Safe Drinking Water Act. And I'm pleased to announce that, as you see the three-year history here, that we have not had any major actions of non-conformance on any of those permits. So really a testament to the leadership of our utilities, superintendents right on down. We take this as job number one. Let's make sure we comply with these regulatory requirements. When we shift over and look at customer satisfaction, we do have a fairly detailed documentation of the kinds of contacts that we get from our customers, both on the water and wastewater side. And the majority of those, unfortunately, are complaints. We do get a few compliments, but as we always have a tendency to look to how we can do better, you know, our primary interest is understanding those complaints. And to put that into context, if you now drill in just a little deeper on the water side, you can see on this chart that we have taken those complaints and indexed them against 1,000 customers. That's an industry standard measure. And the AWWA benchmark, which is at two complaints per 1,000 standard, that we are well below that and trending down. If we drill a little bit deeper, still talking about water, giving you an idea of some of the reasons, you can see that under appearance, pressure, odor, taste, those are the primary areas that we get feedback on. And I'm very pleased to see, and will continue to hopefully see, the area of appearance, which really involves the brown water, discolored water kinds of issues. And you can see that trending as we develop new policies and procedures around how we deal with that. A major contributor is the treatment facilities that we're putting in, and the modified flushing processes that go along with that. So we're tracking, we're looking for opportunities, dissecting these as far as we can drill down and use them for corrective action. Now, if we shift over on the wastewater side, you'll see a similar picture. We do have a national benchmark. You'll see that the city of Meridian is well below that in terms of complaints per 1,000 customers, and an appropriate trend as we look at that as well. Here are responses. We have a fewer number of complaints from the sewer side, but you can see that the tallest bar here is missing and damaged manholes, followed by the other category, which is a variety of kind of random contacts that we get. So an idea of just some of the things that we're dealing with and trying to make proactive action for improvement. One of the areas in reliability that has a national benchmark is actually main breaks. And although we want to avoid them like the plague, we do have a few of those in the city of Meridian. This particular metric is measured on breaks per 100 miles of pipe, and you can see that the national average is about three breaks per 100 miles. And you'll see that we're well below that at .3, so an order of magnitude of 10 below that. And that actually represents about two main breaks in the city of Meridian a year. So it's extremely low, good indicator, but I think it also represents a new, a fairly new system that we have comparatively to other communities. So those are, those are the items that we feel like we have most developed, and in a variety of the others that we showed you. This is actually the kind of dashboard information that you have access to today and are receiving with sales data, project numbers, customer accounts, and how that's growing. And I think I'll end with the question that I think all of us are looking for is, you know, is this the kind of information that you would like to see, that you think our citizens would like to see? Are you getting the right stuff? If not, what do you want to see? We have a lot of other information as we try to manage our day-to-day utility operations and things. And so we look, we look for that guidance, and I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Dell. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Dale. No questions. I think that information is wonderful and exactly what people need to see. But first and foremost, I just want to say thank you. Being your liaison to you and your team has truly been a wonderful, amazing learning experience. And it's just, I mean, if the citizens of Meridian could only know the depth and the amazing people that are behind the water that always comes on and goes away and does what it's supposed to do, it's truly just, no amount of appreciation is enough for what you and your team do. So thank you.
Good. Thank you for those comments. I'm turning to see if Liz is running out the door. She's still, she's still sitting there, so that's good. So.
Any other comments or questions? I think we've told you and your team many times the appreciation this elected body has for the work and the pride that they take in our facilities, the care they take, and appreciate the detail. This is just the tip of the iceberg, and the data that they analyze and evaluate to make sure that they continue to do what's right for our citizens and our customers. So thank you, Dell. Thank you to your team. We greatly appreciate the work you do.
And on behalf of that team, I thank you for the support.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Merry Christmas.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to move down to the podium. And I'll ask Ms. Mylum if she'll join me down there. I'm not sure where I should stand to address council or to address our guests.
Who wants to look at this? You're on. You got the crowd.
Now, see, you just epitomize what my comments were going to be. Certainly, the last six years have been full of surprises, and certainly, if we could bottle the energy that Genesis brings to this council, to the departments that she serves as liaison to, to that forward-looking face to our community, we would all be wealthy and walk around with a smile on our face, always. Oh, my gosh. And there have been times that I've thought, oh, my gosh, Genesis. And there, there have been times that I've thought, oh, my gosh, Genesis.
Don't say that, I'm not.
So, I just want to personally thank you for six years that you've given to this community. You've brought an analytical perspective and an attention to detail and always have brought levity to the discussions that have really been appreciated, for the most part. And we, we appreciate you, Genesis. I, I just want to present you with this plaque. And we wanted it to be something that you could display on your desk and, and take great pride in, in the service that you've given this community. Our community has grown better because of the discussion that you bring to it. Certainly, we have more tot lots around the community. This says, "Presented in appreciation for your contribution and service to the city of Meridian from January 2014 to December 2019." Thank you. We know that your heart will continue to be in Meridian and with your family. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, one thing that you have probably noticed about me in the last six years is I'm, I'm not one that speaks just to hear my voice. I try to save that for when there's something important, and, and I'm not real big on speeches. And I've learned a lot. I've gotten much more comfortable with public speaking since I've been doing this. And I don't want to cry, which is why I wasn't going to say anything, because you're like family. And it's been a really awesome six years. I, I do have to go take care of my biological family if I'm leaving, but I'm going to miss you. I can't really, it hasn't really sunk in that this is over yet until after I'm done, I think. But I'm going to think about all of you a lot, and I'm going to miss you, and thank you for being my friends and my support and the whole city, the employees, the, the people is what I'm going to miss most about this position. And hopefully, I'll, I'll still get invited to things and come around and say hi every once in a while. So, love you.
Love you.
I guess I might ask the counsel, any, any comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I was going to speak at you when you're sitting up there so we could look at you, so I kind of looked sideways. There is a lot that we've benefited from as a community and a council, having you as part of our team. And among all of those, you are the most authentic public servant. You really are. And I think anybody I've ever talked to, employees, developers, citizens, they all say the same thing. You are genuine to the core, which has made you exceptional at what you do. It grounds all of us in how we see things. You wear your heart on your sleeve, and you're wicked smart with your small business background, right? You worked your tail off to have what you have, and you bring that intelligence to your decision-making. And it just, we all are better because of that. So, thank you for providing that to all of us. You're not moving out of the country. We've got commissions and all sorts of opportunities to serve and remain a part of our city, and we would be blessed if you still share some of your time and talents with us. Love you.
I'll say two things, then. If you ever have the chance to serve in any capacity with your friends, you should do it. And I'm lucky that we're all friends. But Genesis and I were friends long before we served together. And this can be said for all three of our council members who are leaving. They all served our community before they were elected. I think that really tells a lot about this body. But I learned two things from Genesis that I will take with me. One is that we don't have to be so damn serious all the time. And I need to be reminded of that day in and day out. And I'm going to miss having you beside me reminding me that we don't have to be so serious. To Councilmember Borton's point, Genesis is incredibly authentic, and I would say has been the most effective council member that we've had over the past six years. And Mayor Tammy hit it on the head. We've got more tot lots in this town, and the development community knows, if you come before the city, you better have a nice tot lot if you're going to get Councilmember Mylon's vote. And if that's not a good definition of effectiveness, that applications improved because they knew they were going to be in front of you, I don't know what is. And so, I was fortunate enough to, to work for the city, and when I told the mayor that I was leaving, I said, "Just because you're not on the payroll doesn't mean you have to stop working for our community. And if you don't come a-knocking, the city's going to come knocking for you, so be prepared. And we miss you. We love you very much."
One last thing. Madam Mayor, you, I can't, it's not, there's not a whole lot more to add than what's already been said by Mr. Borton, Mr. Cavanagh, but there's, there's one thing that I truly have noticed about you, and it's, it, it's evident in public service, but not so much in politics. And that's, unfortunately, that's a little bit of part of what we do. But you are a beautiful soul. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Laura Roberts, will you come join me? So, this is, Ann has served four years with the city of Meridian. And I recall that when Councilman Zarumba announced his retirement, he wanted to make sure that the baton was passed to someone that he respected, and he got really excited when he heard that Ann was going to run. As Ann has admitted through the, the last fall in campaigning, that she listens and she speaks when she has something that she feels that she can add to the conversation. But one thing that Ann always does is appreciates our staff. She always takes a moment to give them kudos. And you feel true love up there when, when you speak and, and thank the presenter. It's, it's the Meridian way. It is that way that we all want to be treated. You have always treated everyone standing at this podium with respect and with a lot of gracious kindness. So, on behalf of the city, I want to thank you for your four years of service in representing our citizens and certainly, probably even more importantly, representing our staff. You can definitely tell that you have a heart for them, and I know that they feel it, too. This is presented in appreciation for your contribution and service to the city of Meridian from January 2016 to December 2019. And thank you for your service, Ann.
Thank you. because what I wanted to say was thank you. Because without, when David suggested, when he came by the office, you were the push that got me to run for city council. And so, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. It has been an amazing experience. It's been an incredible four years. Truly, truly, it is a family, and it's not just those of us that are up here, but everyone that works for the city. I have felt so blessed to get to know each and every one of you, my council team, fire, police, everyone is so special. And I just, I, if I could, I would hug, as you guys know, each and every one of you for making Meridian what we are today. And it's truly, truly an amazing place to live, and I look forward. I've already been talking to some people about ways to volunteer. So, I don't plan on going anywhere, but it's just been an honor to serve. So, thank you.
Counsel, any comments?
Madam Mayor. I would love to. And it's been, it's so wonderful to know you before you served and to be able to serve next to you on the city council. I think of your, the manner in which you serve reflects that you've got a little bit of Keith Byrd in you. You care, and you, you, you ask, whether it's our departments or of us, about what is of interest, what is it we want to accomplish. You ask always about family, and you look towards serving others before, starting with what you want to do and what you think is important. You always receive first, and you take input. And that's, that's a trait Keith always had. It's a trait that you've got, which I think makes you extremely successful in your service. The mayor hit it on the head. It's, it's why you naturally show appreciation for people who work hard and do great things for our community. Everybody loves that, and it's just, it's who you are. It's your DNA, which is, we just love you for it. And in your service, you, among everything else, you keep such a fine eye on public safety. I know it's so important to you, and that's been really valuable for all of us, so I thank you for that as well. We look forward to seeing how, how and where you volunteer in our city in the years to come.
Thank you.
I'd be honored to serve with both of you at the front desk.
Yes, let's do it. We have a scheduled.
That's awesome.
Well, we need to keep an eye on you. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Again, it's always more enjoyable to serve with your friends, and Ann is the most passionate and compassionate member of our city council. And again, Mayor, you, you hit it on the head. If there's a council member that fiercely advocates and is a cheerleader for our employees, it's Ann. And it's two things that you taught me. One I'm still working on is that you can be a leader without opening your mouth. I think you're such a thought leader, and you impact so many things just by quietly engaging with people instead of being a blowhard from this dais that I often am. The other one, one that we can always all learn, is you are just such an encourager. And it doesn't matter if somebody's having the best day of their week or their worst day of the week, you're encouraging them to make it better. And boy, that's one of those that is easier to say but really hard to do, and it is built into your DNA. And this body is better for it, our employees are better for it, and our community is better for it. And I hope that the incoming council and this current body can embrace that, not just with our employees, but with our citizens as well, because you really were the gold standard when it came to that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Ann, you know, this is, this is a lot harder than I thought it was going to be. I'm already an emotional guy as it is, you know? I, I cry about, you know, when people talk about cat parks and stuff. And so, this is, this has been hard for me to, to find the words in which I can communicate how I really feel. But there's two things that come to mind when I think of Ann. Number one is community. There are very few people that I've met who are engaged in the community, in all aspects of the community, whether it's economic development, whether it's the service aspect of what we do, whatever the case may be. You are, community is top of mind to you, and that is a wonderful trait to have. And the second thing has been somewhat talked about is gratitude. If there's, if, I always look to you when, when a compliment needs to be made on the dais toward whoever is giving a presentation, because no one does it better than you. And if, excuse me, and if there is a trait that is, connects people together, it's gratitude and showing thanks to those with whom you serve and those with whom you love. So, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
Well, thank you for listening to me. I was right. And it's been, it's been a fun, great experience having you on the council the last four years. So, I'm really glad that you did decide to, to run and to make that dais. I hope that, I'm glad you guys are all out there, that you guys can keep this fun. Everything doesn't have to be serious, even when things are serious. And don't give up on the tot lots, Ann. Ann, I, I've actually probably seen you less for personal reasons over the last four years than before. So, let's go get some wine.
Okay. With that, we're at the end of our agenda.
Hi.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to, here's my question.
Need some help, buddy? You need my muscles?
I think Chris is going to find something.
Chris has muscles.
If we find Chris. Hi, Madam Mayor.
Here it goes.
Can you help? Yeah. I love the look on your face right now. Is that priceless? I don't know what's going to happen here. So, here's the deal. It's great to, and we appreciate recognizing the council and our team. You can tell we're emotional, but attitude reflects leadership, and you've been our leader throughout this council and prior councils. There's lots of people who've had an opportunity to serve with you up here, to learn from you, and to be a partner in making Meridian a better place. And you have been the captain of the ship to make that happen. So, our council, current and former, former council, wanted to give you a little something. You're retiring, you're going to have lots of time to sit around and relax and read, so we've got you a little something.
Ah, is that a rocking chair? It goes with my trike, right?
But it's, it's more than just that. So, it's a wonderful rocking chair, a symbol of your retirement, but it also is signed by the current and former council, front and back, who've all left you a message describing what serving with you has meant to them and to the community. So, we've got, and March Byrd signed it as well, which we think is really great. So, we've got all the current and former as you relax in retirement. So, thank you for serving with all of us. If you want to come test drive it for a picture, come on down.
I think you should.
Do you want me to pretend to be your grandbaby? Sure.
You don't have a rocking chair, do you?
Okay. You're not going to tuck me on this, right?
Nice.
Nice, smooth.
Yep.
Okay.
Good stuff.
Okay, we'll just put it up there. Come on down.
You've got 10, 12. Careful.
Take slumpies on trikes. Ready? One, two, three.
You love it. You love it.
I think it's on the top.
Yes. Not right to the hand. There's the, yeah, it's on the bottom. The, the, the.
We're not going to pux the all of this, right?
Very nice.
Nice, smooth.
Yes. Yep. Good stuff.
We'll just put it up there. Come on down.
You've got 10, 12. Careful.
It takes some pees on trikes. Ready? One, two, three.
You love it.
They're both down there. I know, where was the wine? I'm going to that we adjourn.
I have a motion of second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. All ayes.